Plymouth Township Planning Committee meeting will come to order at 7:02. Secretary will please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here, Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Itzel.
Here.
Bob Dorchevitz.
Here.
Keith Postel is excused and Bill Pratt.
Here.
And we don't have any changes in the agenda for this evening. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And moving on to new business, application 2325-0219, site plan review for Burger King. And Ms. Holly, you have your report.
Thank you Commissioners. The application before you is for our proposed facade and site improvements to the existing Burger King drive-through that's located at 4880 Ann Arbor Road. The Burger King with drive-through is considered a special land use in the Ann Arbor Road Arc Corridor District. And it is also a special architectural and feature focal area for the Downtown Development Authority as the Ann Arbor Road Corridor is the principal road network within the DDA's district. Such buildings in the corridor are of primary importance and may require additional architectural elements and inclusion of features as recommended by the Planning Commission when undergoing a significant remodel. So in terms of the zoning and the use and the site dimensions, those are compliant with the current zoning ordinance and the Arc District. There are a number of landscaping and screening items that are called out in our review letter. The applicant has provided a letter of intent to the Commission which is placed before you this evening stating that they will comply with the landscaping requirements and those that were required with the previous plan from, I believe, the latest plan from 2005. The majority of the discussion, I believe, tonight will focus on the building design and architecture. So no change is proposed to the northern portion of the Burger King restaurant except for painting, but the southern half of the building is proposed to be demolished. And new storefront windows that match the existing are proposed on all three facades to the east, south, and west. And a brick veneer, as we understand from the elevations, is proposed along that new southern area as a foundation, but we're requesting that that be clarified by the applicant. And then outside of the foundation, the greater portion of the building, three-fourths up, is proposed to be covered with a beige ethos. And in Article 28, Section 14 of the zoning ordinance for building design standards, it requires that a minimum of 75% of all building facades excluding the roof and windows shall consist of masonry products such as brick, cut stone, colored split face black, limestone, et cetera. The remaining 25% of the building may be used with alternative materials which would include ethos unless the Planning Commission finds justification for ethos or an alternative material to be greater than 25%. There is also a fiber cement siding panel that's shown as a wood product on the elevations. And then a red ceramic tile is proposed on the west and south elevations. The design section also requires that variations in color shall be kept to a minimum and the use of high intensity color is prohibited. Accent colors may be permitted by the Planning Commission if you find justification. So for instance, if it's directly tied to the logo or brand, that might be justification if it complements the other primary building colors. It also appears on the elevations that a red metal LED pan is proposed on the roofline for the east, south, and west elevations. This would require a Planning Commission waiver and we request that the applicant provide a bit more detail about that area. And based on the adopted architectural standards of the Ann Arbor Road Corridor District which was developed by the DDA and approved by the Planning Commission and Board, it is recommended that the following building elements are added to create visual interest. So this would include window trim detail and windows recessed from the building facade to create depth variation. So the Planning Commission is charged with giving direction to the applicant on those items and to hearing the justification by the applicant for such requests. There's also outstanding items as related to signage, requesting that sign coverage calculations are provided and that any panel signs that the applicant is requesting, that those would also have to be found as permissible in the Arc District by the Planning Commission. In the past, the Commission has permitted panel signs if it represents the brand logo that is complementary to the building. So that determination would also need to be made for all three facades as the applicant is proposing three wall signs on the west, south, and east elevations. Those are the bulk of the outstanding items as the landscaping is covered and we invite the applicant to discuss the elevations in detail. Thank you.
And just a procedural question. I see you titled this site plan consideration, so is this like a tentative, a final, or is this a little bit different because it's a remodel?
It is a bit different as it is a remodel and that the building footprint itself is not being enlarged, there's not an addition that's being proposed as part of this or any change to the access drives or the circulation of the site. And the consideration namely comes from the fact that the applicant is requesting several waivers from the Commission and, you know, direction and consideration of those requests is needed before the project can move on.
And the applicants received their report from the Fire Department and they have noted that there are no deficiencies from a public safety perspective. So with that, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Hello? Oh, thank you. John Pastor from George H. Pastor &amp; Sons, 34018 Beacon, Livonia, Michigan. With me tonight is Tom Davis from GPS Hospitality. He's the Director of Construction. We're here to answer any questions that you have and I'll go over a little bit over the remodel. Burger King is a national brand, is requiring strong-arming, twisting, beating over their heads that they remodel all their stores, which actually has been a good thing for the brand. Most of the stores, or all the stores in Livonia have been done, most in the state have been done, you know, we're just getting to the final ones that we're, you know, getting to. GPS Hospitality, about five years ago, bought the stores from the Show Stec Company, so they own about 65 stores throughout the state. Burger King has then come up not only to GPS but nationwide with this new design which is the nichihua, which is a wood slat cement board that is usually over all the entrances and towers. Then they, with their painting and their ethos, has created their new look. We also have our awnings over each individual windows to give that actually depth perception that the Planner had suggested. The tile off the outside does accent our sign logos and such. And the LED, we have existing LED red band now, this is now bringing up to an LED band and just bringing it up to more amount of times. So with that, ready to answer any and all questions that you may have.
Okay, well, we did get the communication today that you're going to comply with all the landscaping issues that were raised in the report.
Yes.
So we can just leave those aside from our discussion today.
Exactly, yeah, because we, you know, being new owners, we've never had the original plans, so we got with the Planner, she gave us copies today so that we can actually submit that along with it, so we should be satisfied with that.
So what, so on the facade waivers, we can talk about that a little bit. So Laura, what were your concerns again about the facade?
I think the first would be if the foundation, the new foundation that's proposed on the southern half of the building will be a brick veneer.
Yes, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, the, just the front and the side, right? Yes, that's the front and the side where the old solarium is coming off and where the new walls are going, that will be full brick on that portion of it. It's green, it's coat. I want to say that store was probably built in the 80s because it wasn't their first generation or second generation which was a BK1 or BK22, that's, I believe, a BK50. A BK50, so that was done mid 80s. Yeah, is when those stores were being built.
So what's the closest store that would reflect what your intentions are to do with this store?
I believe the one, the closest one's probably, well, no.
So you haven't done Sheldon Road, right?
Pardon me?
Sheldon Road has not been done, right?
No, I don't think so.
Right?
The closest one would probably be Livonia.
Where in Livonia?
Seven in Middle Belt, five in Middle Belt, but they don't have the nichihua. Well, I'm trying to get the one with the nichihua because Burger King originally had metal paneling where the nichihua was, they stopped going to that, go to the wood grain because it looks a little bit more classy and all that stuff upgraded, so I'm just trying to figure out where the closest.
That's okay.
I can send you some. Orchard Lake, yes, 12 and Orchard, yes, we built that, yes. That would be actually the closest one for the extra finishes and stuff with the nichihua and such.
So on the new four storefront windows, you're going to match the existing aluminum windows that are being proposed for the east, south, and west elevations?
For Burger King standards, yes, we have to match up.
Okay, and existing bollards by the dumpster enclosure are going to be painted black and the existing masonry dumpster enclosure walls are to be repaired and painted to match the building with new aluminum coping and wood grates?
Yes, sir.
So I think the thing is on the ethos, you had a concern about the ethos?
So per the zoning ordinance, ethos can only comprise 25% of the facade material.
75% standard is a problem, right?
Correct.
Issue.
Correct. And the Planning Commission has the ability to grant a waiver to that standard if there's justification provided?
Because I believe right now it's T-111. Most of it, which is wood right now, so they basically had that experience already done once, now they're upgrading it.
So since I'm not familiar with this terminology of, no, no, of this wood that you're talking about, what is it?
Well, the nichihua.
Nichihua, I'm not, you know, that's a...
I'm sorry, the nichihua is actually a wood grain cement panel.
Oh, is it a cement panel?
Yes, it's actually a cement board.
So like hardy board?
Yeah, except it's actually a little bit thicker and more dense than the hardy board.
Oh, okay.
And that's being installed in lieu of T-111?
That's installed at the towers.
At the tower.
That's what's making, then the rest of it is actually instead of the T-111 or wood paneling.
Right.
For lack of a better word, that's where the ethos is going.
So you're getting all, something more made?
Yes, everything's going to be more made free and some would say ethos is a masonry product because it is actually done by the masonry.
What's the, does the Commission want to discuss the whole ethos? What do you think about what they're proposing?
It's a lot of ethos. How many, what, can you tell us how much ethos we're talking about or? When you do the calculation, you got to take out the windows and all that, right?
Correct.
So, you know, I don't know. If you take out the windows, how many feet up is the brick?
Brick is up probably about nine feet.
Nine feet up to the brick? And it's just on two sides or?
Uh, ethos is on.
No, no, not the ethos, the brick.
Oh, the brick is on, actually, the brick, other than where the windows, there's no windows that's at about the nine foot mark.
Okay.
The windows is at the three foot mark.
Okay.
And it's on all four sides, brick is on all four sides.
Oh, it's on all four sides, okay.
I'm not sure if this is that much different than the remodel of the Arby's that was just down the street. They used a lot of ethos.
Or the Taco Bell, pardon? Or the Taco Bell that we did several, couple years ago.
Or the Taco Bell?
The one in Plymouth? Yeah.
At Mill Street, that was just last year?
We did one right on Plymouth Road.
You did a nice job on the Mill Street.
So, I, you know, your design is your design, I don't know that I have a real problem with this percentage. I do have one major problem though. I think it's a major problem. My understanding is you are not replacing that pole sign. You call it a pylon sign, I call it a pole sign. That's not permitted in the Ann Arbor Road District. And when you do a major renovation to a building in the Ann Arbor Road District, the Planning Commission has the right to ask you to bring that sign to the Ann Arbor Road Standard.
Yes.
And I think we need to do that. I will tell you this, the gentleman who is directly east of you came for a major remodel. We requested that he change his pole sign. He said no, he didn't get his remodel. Okay? It's that important. This whole project, Ann Arbor Road started in the mid 90s and, you know, you're not, what I'm looking for you to do is to bring that sign into compliance with the Ann Arbor Road Corridor Standard. And do you know what that is? It's a masonry base sign.
So you want a monument?
I want a monument sign. Well, I think you can go over that with the Planner, but I would not vote for this project if you don't change the sign. Simple. And that's because we only have very few opportunities because obviously Ann Arbor Road up and down has many pole signs and we only have very few opportunities to bring things into the current standard. This Ann Arbor Road Standard didn't happen when the original zoning ordinance was written. So my thought process is when we have the opportunity to do this, we ought to take that opportunity as a Planning Commission. That's my thought process. So I'm fully in favor of allowing you to do your facades the way you want to do them, but only if you bring that sign into compliance with Ann Arbor Road.
And that really speaks to continuity on Ann Arbor Road and as the Commissioner said, we don't have that many opportunities to improve the corridor and it would put you in play with everybody else.
Were you planning on that?
No, no, sir. But, as you know, in your restaurant, we'll tell you that, especially where that store sits and stuff with some of the, shall I say, older trees and stuff, it's just, a lot of times it's really hard to see the restaurant and stuff, so that's very, very important. But, you know, if I could take a couple minutes and talk it over, if there, or if there's any other questions or anything like that, that we can address it, if I could just talk to him for a couple minutes and then I can address it right back if you don't mind.
Well, let's just cover a couple more items.
Right.
Because maybe you might want to have coffee.
So we know that's one item.
Right, that's one item that you folks might want to have to talk about. So also in the Planner's Report is the issue about the ceramic tile and the red natural color, so is that the red, the Burger King red, I'll call it, that's the color?
Yes, sir, it's just on that one corner, on the left front corner, the recessed part of the tower. Just to highlight our image. There's not that much square footage of that tile.
Anyone have concerns about this tile, the red tile?
Part of the branding.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem and also in terms of the signage, you know, you've got, in terms of exposure, you have plenty of exposure on your building with your building signs up here, so I don't know that people aren't going to recognize you, Burger King's, you know, you've got already longevity on that corner, so the, I don't think the monument sign would be a hindrance at all, I really don't.
I appreciate the comment.
And on the LED banding, so you have fluorescent lighting now for that banding that's existing there now?
Our light bar at the top, sir?
Uh huh.
That is all LED.
No, what is it existing?
Oh, it's probably fluorescent now.
Yeah, it's probably fluorescent.
It is, so is the, can you speak to, will the LED lighting be brighter than the fluorescent lighting that's there now?
It's a cleaner, it's a cleaner light as opposed to being, it's not meant to be brighter, it's just meant to be cleaner and low maintenance and less money to run.
So the intensity of the lighting is not changing?
Yeah, because most of the, I'm sorry, most, if we did have it brighter, most of the residents would be yelling, screaming at us for sure.
Getting back to signage, it looks like your four medallions, round signs are all the same diameter and about the same height. Would you happen to know what the diameter is on those?
Six foot.
And how elevated, how high up on the facade is it?
I got to imagine they're probably, if you go the center line, it's probably around the 16 to 18 foot mark.
Commissioners, if I can just interject.
So the center would be at 16, 18.
On their west elevation, the colored elevation that's in your packet where it shows the two wall signs, the two button signs as they're called, those, the applicant has removed one after discussions with the Planning Office. They would need to seek a variance if they wanted that fourth wall sign, so there's only one proposed on each facade.
Which one have they removed? The middle one?
One over the drive, sir?
Okay.
Is that the one you're taking off?
This elevation shows all four button signs.
Right, right.
Right.
And Laura, you had discussions offline with the applicant about the architectural standards, did you recommend this canopy that he mentioned or give him any direction on the architectural standards at all?
The only thing that we went back and forth with was the signage.
Oh, okay. So what does the Commission feel about the, how this reflects the architectural standards that we established a few years ago?
Well, for me, as I said, you know, as long as we get, yeah, because I don't see, I don't really see any purpose to that button sign over the drive-through. You've got one, you've got one on the, what, the east side and the south side, right? And basically, you're literally tearing down, are you closing the store while you do this?
In the words of, no way, they'll never let us close.
Mr. DVS himself or whatever that name of that, the outfit was?
Well, I happen to be a pastor, I don't have that much power, but, you know, I just don't want to be anywhere near lightning, how's that? No, we do these remodels and we try and keep the drive-through open at minimum is what we try and do. Yes, it may be closed for a day or two or three, you know, depending on if we're doing the drive-through lane, if the concrete, I haven't been by there, if the concrete's bad, then we close for that, we may be doing it for seal coating and striping the parking lot and all that stuff, so it may be closed for a day or two here and there, but mostly it stays open.
Just as another suggestion, I don't know, for me, if, on the, the traffic flow, if, it would be a really great idea, I think, if you took that Ann Arbor Road entrance and exit and said, no left turn onto Ann Arbor Road. If you put, just put a sign, I'm not saying that anybody's going to enforce it. All I'm saying is that if they see the sign, because I can tell you, when Ann Arbor Road is busy, have you been there when it's busy? And they're trying to turn left and go across three lanes with seven trucks lined up to turn left into the warehouses down on Hagerty, down in Canton, it's very dangerous. And I just think any modicum of deterrent that we could, we could put to that would be, would be just great. Because I think the best option for anybody trying to left turn on Ann Arbor Road is to go out the back and come around the light. But I have, I have witnessed people halfway out on Ann Arbor Road, traffic being held up because...
I wasn't there that day. It wasn't me.
I'm not so sure though, we ought to be putting traffic control signs up that are not legal, not enforceable.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to make things better, that's all.
You can't prohibit them from putting up signs.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know.
It's just a suggestion.
It's not that I disagree with you, but if somebody turns left, they get in an accident, there was a sign, but the sign was not really an ordinance, the sign was really not...
Putting your turning head on there, yeah.
Yeah. Now the township's in the middle of something because we made you put the sign up there.
Commissioners, maybe the applicant could clarify if there's any existing signage there right now, because I do believe on Google Street View at least, it shows a no-left-turn sign, but maybe that has been taken down?
You think there's one up there now?
It looked from Google Street View that there were three, including one that was leaning, I haven't gone through the...
One that was leaning? Probably got run over.
It was leaning to the left.
Is the sign in Bill's handwriting?
Scrawled in magic marker.
I'm not sure, given how you're going to renovate this building, if you can do very much more on the meeting on architectural standards, did you look at our architectural standards?
Yeah, with every applicant, we have to go with every community throughout the country and we try and go as close as we can with not only yours, but our hands are somewhat tied and handcuffed to Burger King standards and stuff, to what they allow us to do and stuff. And if you really look at what Burger King has done and understand Burger King has been, in my opinion, humble opinion, please don't get me in trouble, Burger King's been really way behind the times, if you guys know, and the stores are, a lot of the stores are really, really bad. And they're finally coming into some kind of conformity that they actually look very appealing and all that stuff. If you've gone on the inside of them, they're actually going towards the, like the Panera Bread type look, they have the wood grain floors, you know, they have the high booths, they have the soft chairs in them, they're, you know, the ceiling is a trellis ceiling now. So they're really putting a lot of thought, time, and money into these remodels. These aren't cheap remodels, these are probably putting in a half million dollars or better into each one of these remodels, so, 614, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Well, in many cases, with these type of operations, the building is their sign, really.
Yeah, and that's why they're trying to, where before, and I'm, I've been building Burger King since 1982 and Burger King used to tell their franchisees, you're going to do this. The franchisee would be like, yeah, yeah, yeah. So three of them would do it and nobody else would. So you had so many different blends of these Burger Kings out there, that's the reason why I think they got the look and the reputation, so to speak, that they got. Now Burger King says, you don't remodel, guess what? Time here is going to buy you out. And now they're like, wait a minute, so now I do have to remodel? And now they're like, "Wait a minute, so now I do have to remodel." And it is making people, and I think it's making the brand a better place, which makes our communities a better. Because the better the store looks, the better the community looks and stuff, so. I really believe in not only what Burger King is doing nationwide, it just helps out everywhere and the brand itself, which then keeps me employed.
So you're not, you're not increasing square footage, you're not increasing seating? Is seating changing at all, no?
The, the design.
The design? It's just a layout, not the amount of seats? Uh, adding any addition, additional employees with this? This doesn't impact employees at all, or?
Well, it actually keeps them, and hopefully, they usually see anywhere from a five to twenty percent increase. So if it gets towards an increase of twenty percent, then yes, they'll hire more.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Laura, on these outstanding items, um, I don't know if you feel comfortable moving forward, or should these, you know, we, you know, there's some things that still have to be noted on the plan that you're asking for? Those, so these folks come back to us? I mean, you know, because this is such a little different process than we're normally doing.
It's really the commission's pleasure, um, regarding the landscaping, and, um, I suppose the sign as well, the, the pole monument sign.
Well, you can either caucus now, you can go out in the hall and, and talk, or you can come back and-
I've already, I've already talked about it.
Oh, okay.
The only thing that we would like to know is what is the size of the monument sign? That's, I mean, is it two foot, or is it, you know, I'm sure it's probably total of six foot high maximum?
Uh, I believe it's, uh, close to that, and it really depends, it, the height can increase and the, the square footage of the signable area can increase based upon the setback from the right of white line, so there's an-
So what would be, I, I, I guess what would be the minimum, I, I guess maybe here's what I want, here's what we would do. If we're willing to get rid of the pole sign, could we then have our sign package as presented? And then we would get a monument sign with a reader board on it so that we can, if that would be, um, approved as a compromise?
A reader board, you said?
He's changeable.
Oh, the changeable?
Or we can do electronic, whichever one you prefer.
Not, not digital.
Oh, that's what I said, either whichever one you want.
Well, your, your, your pole sign is changeable, isn't it? Hence the reason you want it on the other one.
I'm not very changeable myself, but, um-
I'm very unchangeable.
Understand, is, as you, yeah, as you know, it's not just a promotion, but it's also getting out the local messages and all that stuff, that it's important. You know, it, I believe, um, and again, I don't know-
So my concern, I, I think we need, my concern is, how, how big can the sign be? And will it be readable for what you're trying to do?
Agreed, yeah, we're in the same, we're, yeah, I mean, we're in the same boat. Now, most communities, you know, uh, we'll do Livonia, I don't know, uh, for Livonia, it's usually, I think it's a, uh, the maximum they go is about an eight-foot high from ground level. Alright, so you split the, you have usually a two-foot base and then the six foot, you split between the sign and the reader board.
Well... Is that, is that sign specification in the, uh, Ann Arbor Road section?
Correct, Article fourteen.
I heard you say something about revert back to the original as a compromise position, and does that mean you compromise of putting that drive-in window medallion in again? Is that what you were saying?
No, 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 the one that's submitted to you now, so it'd be the three button signs, the Home of the Wopper, um, the LED red band, our drive-through signs which are, or drive-through menu boards which are, I don't think part of this, they're, you're still able to do the drive-through spot. That's what we're referring to, I would not, I don't think, just like you, that button on the inside, I don't think you'd be able to see it anyways. So it'd be the three six-foot buttons, the Burger, I'm sorry, right, that's what I said, yeah.
Well, it might be best for them to come back and, and they can give us, uh, a rendering of either this monument sign or the pole sign, depending on the, whatever you feel.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Whatever the size of the monument sign is, you might want to come back and then we can look at the total package, you can make the adjustments on that.
Could we then, I guess, then, what I would ask for is if we can have a approval on everything but the monument sign, so that we can actually submit for permitting, so we can get that processed going. In the meantime, then I'll come back and, um, go for the, get a, um, a picture or a size or whatever, meet with the planner and make sure that we have a-
Yeah.
A ground sign, if that makes sense.
I'm not so sure, because I think the sign is a good idea.
Well, let me just go back for a minute to the landscaping, and I have to look at the, uh-
While, while he's doing that, do you have a monument sign anywhere else?
Do we have monument signs, sure.
Yeah, with like, kinda like what you might want to put out here.
Yeah, that's what I'll, I'll take pictures of those and then bring them back.
Would that be twelve, is twelve in Orchard Lake got a monument sign?
Uh, yeah, I'll take that one.
Huh, does it?
It, it's an LED, it's a-
It's an LED?
Electronic reader board.
Oh, it's electronic, yeah. Ain't gonna work.
Right, I, that's-
What about the Livonia signs?
I'm sorry.
What about the Livonia signs?
I believe, and, and I could be wrong, it's at the top of my head, I believe it is, um, a ten-foot overall height, but it, they made us do a two-foot base, so maybe the sign is eight foot by eight foot, I think, or eight by ten. So it's like an eighty square feet sign and what they did. But they, because we have a reader board there as well as the Burger King sign, and that's the one on Middle Belt and Five Mile.
Laura, did you, uh, are you requiring them to submit a landscape plan then? Because I've, I've looked at your comments here, and there's some, you know, additional trees and some other things that need to be done.
Correct, and they have stated that, um, before the meeting, that they are, uh, willing to submit that landscape plan.
Okay.
Uh, their intent by submitting that letter is, is that they will provide that.
Landscape?
Yeah.
Is the, uh, along the Ann Arbor Road corridor, is, is that irrigated at all? You know, the, any of your landscape areas are irrigated?
I have to admit, I, I don't know, but I guarantee that they are, because Burger King makes us, yeah, Burger King makes us, um, irrigate everything.
So is the, the landscaping that is supported by the DDA, are they, is the DDA supporting that landscaping like it is elsewhere in other portions of the Ann Arbor Road corridor?
They, the DDA does ma- maintain the landscaping in the right of way. I think that in looking at the DDA plans that were originally part of the streetscape, I believe they're included in your packet, the one sheet of that intersection. They're, they're a bit deficient, so I think some of the, the shrubs have, um, not fared well over the years.
I'm concerned about one particular site along the Ann Arbor Road where they have not taken good care of their landscaping. And, uh, on the other side of this particular site, they've taken excellent care, and they're really technically not part of the DDA, and yet they've taken pride in there where the other one has not, so I want to make sure, that's an important corner, a lot of people get stuck by the light there. So, you know, we want it to look good, um-
The other question that we have on the signage is that the wall signage calculations based upon the actual signable area of the different facades, um, does need to be shown. And the maximum signable area is ninety square feet, so those calculations are still pending.
Alright, we can get those, I, I thought they had them, we have them from the same company, so I'll make sure that they get there. I think the, um, s- six, six-foot square is twenty-eight square feet?
Twenty-eight point two four.
Twenty-eight point two six, so there's three of them, so it's just under ninety for the three buttons.
That also includes the, the flame grilling since nineteen fifty-four. Free standing letters.
I don't have that, I'll, do you have it? I'll have to get that to you, I don't have that here, I'm sorry.
Is that, uh, flame gr- is that flame grilling sign backlit or lit at all?
Yes.
How is it lit?
It's internal LED. All signs now are pretty much LED lights.
So what color is that? Is that gray?
It's white. It's very, it's not really, it's, just enough to bring it out.
Probably similar to what that looks like, that.
So the flame, the flame grilling since nineteen fifty-four, that's the thing that's white?
Yes.
We've never liked white signs before because we think they're sort of glaring.
Like the Mumbai market, I think?
Yeah. Yeah, we weren't careful with that, with the Mumbai market, that's really bright.
Southern Ann Arbor Road?
It's pure white, that, that, those letters?
Yeah, that's what you see is actually the, the sign that you see is actually white letters.
Can it be any other color?
Purple pink pocket knives? No, that's, that's all that they, that's all that they'll allow us to do it in. I mean, I, it actually, because any new Burger King, the one on Plymouth, um, and Wayne Road will have, I believe has the newer signs on it. If not, the other one in Livonia does. Um, I can, like I said, I have to come back for the monument sign, I surely can bring these back for that and get you a bit of better details and stuff, so.
So when you say the newer signs, that has the flame, flame grilling since nineteen fifty-four?
Some of the stores have them, some of the other ones still have Home of the Wopper. So depending on what year, if it, you know, because this remodel program is in its seventh year, so if they did it within five years, they're still Home of the Wopper. They just started switching over flame grilling, um, about a year or so ago, for that to be the only one, so-
And they're all white?
Yes.
That and also the length of the canopy for the field also.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that, uh, horizontal member is white too underneath it?
That's the actual canopy, that goes over the door, so rain and all that stuff. I'm sorry.
Is that canopy lit in any portion?
Just, um, a light just so that it's, you know, so you can see.
A down, a down light over the, the entryway or?
Yeah, yeah, that's the only thing that it has, it does, it's not lit itself, the sign is actually-
So, so those, that color's not a good depiction of what that-
Yeah, it doesn't look like a pure white.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, because that looks like it's gray.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the same, somehow it became the same color as the facing on the, on the awning.
Of the, of the, um, awning.
At the awning, yeah.
Red would look nice, you're talking about flame, red would look good because it's flame grilling, that matches the red of the-
Actually, they used to be red and stuff.
But they changed it to white?
Again, I, if it, it, in, I, I am no architect, I always, I know his blue jeans and a shirt go together. But I do know that it's, the thought process behind it is to make it a cleaner, what they consider more elegant look. It's what they convince the slides here, they're, they're clean, they're crisp and all that stuff. And the, one of the biggest thing is that we want our customers, especially the women, the biggest complaint of, uh, a woman going to a Burger King or any fast food restaurant is safety. And the whiter it is, or the brighter it is, that they can see, the safer they feel.
Yeah.
And that's where this white actually kind of curtails into that, to make it a clean, more elegant look. That's what their thought process, whether I believe it or not, like I said, blue jeans, I'm sorry that I'm not dressed properly, but I just, you know-
Yeah, it gives them a sense of security. Well, okay, so what's, what's your pleasure?
It seems like this is really a new, a new building, um, as far as the planning commission's concerned. And I agree with Bill about bringing, getting rid of the pole sign, having a monument sign, this is our opportunity. If we don't, um, make that a requirement here, then the next building down the street that has a pole sign, we have no way of, um, enforcing them getting rid of their pole sign and having a monument sign, so I agree with that. It seems like there's a lot of issues here, and maybe we should see it again.
What timeframe are you looking at about your permitting? I mean, would you get the rest of, you know, all the comments addressed? In what length of time, we meet once a month?
That's, the project, they actually wanted to start in the beginning of April, that's why we're trying to get, that's why we asked for at least partial permit, so that we can at least get the, um, plans being reviewed while we're sewing up whatever, quote, loose ends. So I didn't know if we could have a conditional based on signage approval, maybe that's the only thing that we, and really the signage approval, I think, is what we're talking about, is the monument sign. I understand, if I understand what everybody's saying.
Is, you feel you're uncomfortable with what's been, other than the sign, or?
Making sure that, to the landscape plan and the Ann Arbor Road corridor is all in compliance as well?
Yes, we, for the landscaping, we have written a letter, and again, we just got the plan that was original, so we are going to make sure that we are going to take care of that.
Are you comfortable with that, Laura?
I'm comfortable with the landscaping, um, I'm wondering if, if tentative site plan approval, um, for the concept, um, would be a more conservative path? And then if the planning commission did wish to, um, hold a regular meeting instead of the study session, to accommodate the applicant's turnaround time, um, then that would be two weeks, uh, in two weeks from today as opposed to the regularly scheduled, um, April seventeenth meeting, I believe. And then at that time, depending on the applicant's timeline, then final could be considered either at the study session, which would be a regular meeting, or, um, the April, the April meeting. And then the planning commission would be able to see kind of how that monument sign would play out, the exact location, materials.
I think that's a good idea.
Personally, I, I think we need to see how they're going to, you know, what they, what they're proposing, now the sign I'm talking about. You already know you can't do the LED, the-
Digital.
The digital, bright sunlight sign that I know.
Yes, yes, we do know.
So, uh, I'm just thinking that, um, if there's some way to allow them to move along with the rest of it, and, uh, as long as they've already agreed to the landscape, whatever the planner says for the landscape, if there's some way for us to allow them to do that with a, with a partial, I don't know, what you would call it?
A tentative site plan approval?
Kind of condition.
And then-
Approval, uh, with the condition that they have to come back for the monument sign, uh, and with a, a proper drawing and drafting and, uh, and depiction so that we can, so the commission can see what, uh, what's, what they're, they're gonna put out there, or what they're proposing to put out there, so that we know whether it's acceptable to us or not. Seems to me that's, uh, that we can do that, because I, uh, the, the building issues, and, and, you know, it would be nice to, if you finalized your landscape plan at that point as well, uh, bring that, because obviously, your landscape plan is going to be affected by this monument sign, uh, to, to some degree. So I think that, that kind of makes sense to me, does that make sense to you, Laura?
Yes, I agree, tent- tentative, and then depending on the applicant's timeline, either study session for a regular meeting or the April meeting.
Yeah, because I don't, quite honestly, if we decide, you know, you can, you can tell from what we're saying that you're gonna get, you're gonna, in order to get proper approval, you're gonna need to do a monument sign. What that monument sign looks like is, is the key issue. And, uh, and from my perspective, it is, uh, it, it is, as I said earlier, it's absolute that that has to happen. So, um, and, but that's just me, I'm only one of seven, so.
Yeah, they've, they've agreed to it.
So, um, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, just, I have one more que- I have one more question.
Sure.
So looking at this, uh, uh, you know, I see that you're having some of the exterior light fixtures, you know, mounted on the building. Are, do those shine straight out or are they downlighted?
Down.
They're wall washer.
Okay.
They're wall washer.
Okay.
Up and down.
I just wanted to be sure. Okay, I'm ready.
You're ready?
Yeah. No, this is, this is my stuff.
Okay. So someone, someone, I don't like shuffles.
See, I have mine.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that we approve, um, tentative site plan on application twenty-three, twenty-five, oh-two, one, one-nine, um, with approval of, uh, the three panel signs, disc panel signs, or what you call them, button signs, uh, on the three facades, not four. And, um, with the, uh, the building architecture, um, adjustment for, um, amount of brick being acceptable to the planning commission, um, and the, the condition that, uh, the, um, applicant will come back to the planning commission, um...
For approval of a monument sign and a landscape plan, uh, at some future date. Support?
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by, was Commissioner Harp?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, to grant, uh, tentative site plan approval for, for application twenty-three, twenty-five, oh-two, one-nine, for them to come back with additional detail on signage. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but...
Yeah.
Um, did that include the red band in the, um, the Home of the Whopper as well, or is that...
The Home of the Whopper?
Or the grillings?
Yeah, no, that, that includes.
All right. Yeah, you didn't specify. I just wanna make sure that that was part of it and, all right.
Yeah, signage, we're talking that monument.
Right. So the only issue is it's gonna be the landscaping and the monuments.
Right.
Okay, yes. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
You're fine.
All in favors.
No harm in clarifying.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, go block.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Next is application under Old Business, twenty-two, seventy-four dash zero-one-one-eight. The, uh, Back Road, uh, PUD, the site plan update. And, uh, Ms. Hall, you want to give us an update on the situation?
Certainly, thank you. Um, the updated review number eight was provided in your packet, um, as an update. As you recall, uh, this is a PUD, um, where the tentative site plan was granted by the planning commission in April of two thousand and eighteen. And then the final, um, site plan approval with conditions that it be reviewed by the administrative review committee was granted in November of two thousand and eighteen, um, at the request of the applicant due to the, the, um, timeline, timeline, excuse me, that, um, they were under. We still have some remaining outstanding items, um, on the site plan, which are noted in the report. And there are some engineering items as well. Um, they are minor. And they may have been accommodated at this point, um, but I do not have the final review from, um, engineering to state that. Uh, the lot combination does remain outstanding. And item seventeen in the report, the finalization of the PUD contract, um, was given the okay this afternoon by the township attorney for consideration by the board. So since this letter, um, of March fifteenth, there have been a couple of things that have, um, moved along. The applicant has submitted revised plans today, which I have here. I have not had a chance to review them myself for compliance with the outstanding items in the March fifteenth letter. And neither has, um, Chairman Sobolski, um, as he is on the administrative review committee, or Mark Lewis. It is the intent, um, I believe of the applicant to go before the board at their next available meeting, uh, study session for consideration of the project. And, um, I know that the commission was not, um, interested in discussing the merits of the review itself because we have not had a chance to review the plans and you have not, you have not seen them. Would the commission be interested in a special meeting, um, at a later date, once these plans can be reviewed, to discuss further?
Well, first let me ask you, you know, we, we had the November meeting and at that time you were really in a hurry to get this done by the end of the year or very early January. So what caused this delay now, three or four months later?
The, there was a change on the landscape plan because the applicant went out and, um, removed trees there.
All the trees?
All the trees that were in the phase two.
Right.
So if you recall, is, we were gonna save phase two trees until we got to phase two. So he removed them and with the discussions with the administration and Laura, we redid the plan to show all the replacement trees on phase two now. So it was an extensive assessment of what we originally agreed to in the original PUD and comparing it to what we agreed in the phase one stage of the landscape plan, pre-clearing of the trees in phase two, and then implementing those trees back into phase two, creating an extensive screening wall to the west of the property line and along the north property line, as you'll see in the landscape plan. We went round it, with it quite a few times. I've, uh, I've reviewed it. Laura's actually reviewed, my understanding, she reviewed the last landscape plan here about two weeks ago. Based upon her comments, we made those changes. We were grateful with buddies that their timeline got pushed out. They were pushing us to get this thing moving along. And as you can see now going by there, they've finally commenced construction. We gotta stroke a luck with that because they were pressing us that they wanted their development to match up with, um, the expansion of the parking lot. Had to because they, they, they wanna open up with a full parking lot. So, uh, we're fortunate that that happened. It obviously caused the delay. This other element caused the delay. Most recently, of course, there were some changes requested of the elevation. And, uh, well, and let me go back and give you a little bit more explanation. That's sort of on the site plan's side of the standpoint. Engineering, we were really deficient when we came to you in November. We, we're aware of that. There was a lot of things that we needed to catch up with. So the, the, um, applicant has made those changes, met with the engineers on a couple of occasions. Most recently, in the last few weeks, has given them a set of plans that they reviewed. It's my understanding through Noel Santos that they've substantially achieved making all the changes that the, that the, uh, engineer wanted to, uh, have achieved here. So with the comment of the, uh, uh, lot combination, there was a change requested by the engineer last week. We made that. I actually have the originals, were given to me this morning or this afternoon, which I'll turn in with our never, another set of package. You know, it was our intent that we were gonna go on to, uh, a, a April second, um, study session and a subsequent, uh, uh, meeting April ninth. You know, the plans were, rather than submit these plans in a week ago when they should've, I reviewed them, they weren't complete. I wanted the, there was a lot of changes on the elevation that I needed to get completed right, which, uh, I'll comment, a lot of the changes on the elevation that were suggested were good, uh, good changes. More continuity, um, the addition of, uh, taking some of the brick away because the elevation was too busy. All good comments. Uh, you know, I, 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 I wish that we would've picked it up earlier in our, in our assessment of this. But the building's gone through a few variations of colors of stone and so forth. But I feel now we've gotten it to, uh, where it would be a good compliment to the Ruby Tuesday as well. Future buddies, I should say. So a bit of an explanation on sort of that delay, um, um, but, you know, we're here before you this evening. I, I certainly understand the, um, uh, the, the situation. You haven't had the time to take and review the plans. By all means, we, we, we wanna afford you that opportunity to review those, make any comments that you have. Hopefully that we've gotten the elevations to where, um, um, where they need to be, as well as the, uh, landscape plan, which I'm sure your consultants will review and, and give you some comments back on those. As well as I hope that the engineering will too.
So when, and when you were here at the November meeting, we talked about the trees in the back. You had said that you probably have to take, you know, twelve, eighteen trees out for the infrastructure for these buildings in phase one. So why were all the trees taken out?
It was, it was a mistake on the applicant's part of removing those trees. And, and he's going to pay for it dearly because now he's gotta take trees that could've stayed there for a number of years until we brought on phase two and replace them all on site. Now, to that point, it's, it's, we've not been able to replace them all on site. We're gonna end up paying some, uh, um, a portion of that money into the tree fund. There was a hundred and twelve quality trees or by calculation, that's what we had to replace. To your point, uh, Chairman Sobolski, we had agreed to put twelve or fourteen of those quality trees on our phase one. We already bargained for that, that was fine. This was, the trees that we're looking at replacing now are ones that were part of the clearing, uh, process, if you would. So to some extent, yeah, we were gonna replace some of the quality trees on our phase one. But when this other event happened, we, we had to go on to a different stage of how we're gonna, um, replace them all. Now...
So I heard you say that when you were before us in November, you realized that the engineering plans were deficient?
I didn't say they were deficient. We knew that they weren't to a point where they were ready to be approved. There was a lot of work.
So why did you come, so why did you come expecting an approval?
No, we, we, because we agreed that the, the engineers, there was actually a review done. And I felt, felt that, you know, it was far enough along that we all agreed at that point, it was, it was reasonable to get an approval. It was still subject to an elevation review, which we came back in and had a study session, maybe a couple of weeks later. Uh, talked about brick colors and so forth. So we knew there were some outstanding items here. Now, you know, now we've got the engineering well along here and, and, and hopefully moving forward, uh, uh, in anticipation of having the final review come back from, uh, uh, from engineering as well as final review coming back from planning, supporting our steps that we've taken along the way here. I, I don't wanna mitigate the position that, that, that the plans were inferior plans, they just needed some work. I'm just making an acknowledgement here.
So do you feel that the plans you've submitted now are, are as complete as they can be?
Uh, based upon what I've reviewed with what Noel and Dave Richmond have reviewed and the comments that I've gotten back from them, yes. Yeah, Noel, I had called, talked to Noel a week ago, said, Noel, what do you think? You know, I don't wanna hear, I wanna hear from you, you know, I'll talk to the applicant. What do you think? If they've gotten through, he says a couple of items on the grading that they gotta get cleared up. He says a couple of items on the combination, on wording, on, I wanted to say beginning rather than commencement. He says, other than that, I think they're, they've come a long ways. Now, I haven't seen a review, a final follow-up letter. I did see his first review, which, which was about two, two weeks ago. And he was, you know, he was very good in going through all the comments with the engineer and making sure that they get exactly what they wanted on the plan, marked up the plans as well. So there was no, uh, items left up to interpretation by, uh, by a paragraph of a text, so to speak, so... And Laura, uh, Laura through her department has done that very extensively too, and that's been very helpful for both the engineer and the architect on this.
So here we are on the twentieth and, uh, it's on the work session agenda for the trustees on the second.
Correct.
So I'm not sure, Laura, how we can, what, the timing of all of this and how it's going to work. If we have a work session, it would be on the third and, and combination work session slash, um, I call it the, the regular meeting where we actually take action, because we don't vote on things on a work session.
It would have to be, the April third work session would have to be noticed as a regular meeting of the planning commission. If, if the commission wanted to take action after reviewing these plans, um, for a, a second final recommendation to the board of trustees. I suppose the board of trustees could, um, still have a study session on the second, um, with the understanding that the planning commission is, is going to be reviewing the, the plans and still making that final recommendation. Um...
I'm not either. It's the, uh, recognized spring break by the county school.
Well, there you have it.
I feel compelled to say something. This is the dumbest thing I've ever seen. This man does whatever the hell he wants and expects us to kowtow to him. It is the worst. If there was some way for this township to find him for doing things that he should not be doing, we should do that because he needs to pay for denuding that property illegally. And you need to convey that to him. If he comes back here with your phase two, he's not gonna get an approval very easily because you can't believe what he says. He lies. It's, it's just frustrating. And we go over this over and over with this same man. And Ned has got to come to the table with honesty rather than with, uh, pre-berication, which is what he's done regularly. And that's my opinion.
So I'm asking you, what do you want, what do you wanna see tonight? Because now we're really between a rock and a hard place where you see there's several members that are not available to meet on the third. We would try to make yet another accommodation. But it's, it's, the whole thing is backwards now if the trustees are going to meet in work session and then they would take it up at their April ninth meeting. So, you know, you're, it, we're in a situation now that when do we have an opportunity to make a recommendation?
I'd like to mention that this has been four months since November.
And we made an accommodation, you know, back in November.
Which we can obviously see we should never have done. We should never have done that on November. That's obvious by hi- by his action. He, he, his, our approval of that allowed him to do what he did. He thought, well, I'm just gonna take it all down, cause gee, it's cheaper for me to have a guy out there and take all the trees down at one time.
And you're never gonna, you're never gonna replace those trees. Those trees that were there, that, you're not gonna, you're not gonna put trees in there like that. It's not gonna happen.
And, and should there be no phase two? It never gets done.
Now, let's be clear. He's replacing the trees with a repli- based upon the qualification of replacement. Yeah, absolutely.
If there is a phase two.
No, 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 no. Replaces them now. The phase two happens or not, all those trees are replaced under the, uh, the new calculation of replacement.
So when does that happen?
What does it matter?
When does that happen?
It ha- happens as part of the PUD agreement. He has to have all those trees replaced along with the phase one by October thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. We gave him through the summer because it's not smart to plant these big pines in the summer and wait to the fall. So he has to, uh, do that as part of, and he puts up a bond for that as well.
Well, we've, you know, we've tried to accommodate you, you know, we've done that... Well, we, you know, we've tried to accommodate you. You know, we've done that time and time and again.
You have.
And you can feel like, the Commission rightfully feels that, you know, our willingness and our support for this project has been absurd. You know, there hasn't been, you know, we respect, you know, his right to develop it. We're trying to work with him, trying to make this a quality development, but it's just, it takes two to tangle, and that's not happening. And now, here we are in a very tight situation, where the Board wants to meet, and we haven't had an opportunity to review anything. We're not now available to meet in time, to meet their deadline. So, what do you want to see happen?
Can we bring it back as a study session meeting next week? We've paid for one study session. We never had it. Let me misspeak. I missed one. A special meeting. Can we bring it back as a special meeting, which we paid for, we never used it, and have an opportunity for your staff, Laura, and to confirm what Noel and Richmond have conveyed to me, that they've progressed on the engineering, and then have, give Laura an opportunity to review the landscape plan, the current one that's been updated per her review about two weeks ago, and the elevations, which of course was part of your input too, Mr. Swolowski, of what you would like to see there, and come back here next week if the Commission would so consider, I ask. And let me also make a comment here. I've had a lot of successful projects come through here, okay?
Yeah, I've heard that.
You've always worked with me on this one, okay? I realize that. You guys have gone, and girls have gone. You've gone to every extent. I recognize that, okay? And, but I want to get through this and hopefully not be a burden to the Board on this, on the Planning Commission any longer. There's nothing I want to do is get this thing finished, but I want to finish it right, and I want to follow through on this.
Yeah, you raised that issue up in November. We recognize the quality developments that you've done. That's you, but then, you know, frankly, you need to show, you're a consultant, and you really need to be, in my opinion, more firm in consulting with the actual applicant. And I know you've had some issues with the vendors, recognize that, but, you know, it just isn't working very well.
You know, Leo, it's almost like we, and I think Commissioner Pratt would agree, that we, if we had the latitude, we would say, we'll go ahead and we'll approve Phase Two, once he's planted all those trees, or Phase One, once he's replaced all the trees that he's, that he's, that he's pulled. Because that site looks horrendous. It just looks terrible. Just looks terrible.
There's still 17 items on here, you know?
These plans, I've reviewed the plans based upon this last review, and Laura didn't have the benefit of updated plans when she did that, in fairness. So, I understand there was going to be comments on it. But I've reviewed these plans based upon those comments, and a lot of them were on elevation, some of them were on relighting, some of them were landscaping, you know, the final items. I'm confident now, at this point, reviewing the documents myself, that we've captured this.
Did you guys get an easement from Home Depot?
We did not, because that's part of Phase Two.
No, but you still don't have it.
We don't, but we can't compel them to give us something.
I know.
And that's why, that's why we're at a point we can't even do Phase Two. You know, we, they haven't given us any reason to believe that they're not going to give us fire truck access there, because we've been pretty firm on asking for it, and we've had the fire marshal ask for it, and a cover letter to them, and give them the merits of why we're asking for it.
That's not what, we had that issue before, where that's supposed to be an egress, and what was put on the plan was a breakaway gate.
No, it's not going to be an egress. We're going to take away the breakaway gate because it's not appealing. We're going to make it a grassy area that's going to be mountable, so that fire truck can come in, in theory, off of the Home Depot parking lot, I'm sorry, off the Home Depot in grass.
Driveway.
A driveway and come across this mountable area.
Well, we're getting a little bit, but Laura, wasn't that part of the plan, was to have an open, public egress from that Phase Two into the Home Depot driveway?
Originally, yes.
And it's not like that now?
No, but it wasn't, when the applicant appeared in November, it was not, that had been removed at that stage.
So, is that required?
I'm concerned that while Mr. Gonzalez may have reviewed the plans, our job is to review the plans, and it's Laura's job to review the plans. If you have plans tonight, can you review them by Friday, so that we can get them and have a chance to review them by next Wednesday? Is that even possible? And then, the only way I would want to see it is if all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed.
Is Keith back next week?
I don't know. I just, he just told me he wasn't going to be at this meeting. I can ask.
So, you can only have four at most. You'll have four.
For next week?
No, next week. We're not talking to April. We're talking next week.
I thought you said October.
Yeah. Well, we did, but then two, you know, John is, I think, gone, and you're gone, and it's too many.
And I'd have to cancel a trip.
Oh, so it's, that's an out week.
But if it was sent to the Board...
Yeah, they'd trip.
But we don't know if Keith may or may not be available either.
Yeah, I have to check.
Other college visits that you don't want to know where.
Oh, must you?
It's not my choice. My daughter's.
Well, Laura, if you can quickly review the plans, and then let us know what you say, I don't know, you know, if there's still a lot of issues that are still outstanding, I don't see a reason to meet.
I agree.
And we'd meet them Friday, like we usually do.
Yeah, it would have to be noticed.
I mean, have we got time to notice a meeting for next week?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like three days.
Three days.
But I don't want to get plans on Wednesday at 6:00 and try to review them.
Correct. You would need them Friday, normal packets.
So, I'm not suggesting these dates, but if we met next week Wednesday, it has to be noticed three days in advance, so that would have to be noticed on Friday? Is it business days, you know?
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, but we could post a notice on Friday.
You could always notice it, and it's easy to cancel it.
Correct.
If you find that the plans are still deficient in major ways.
So, are we all available next Wednesday? Is that the question?
Are we available? I don't know if I'm available.
I am.
The 27th. Yeah, I could do that. I could do the 27th. So, are you available, Jim?
I am available.
And Bob?
For Leo, Bob, for Ned, Bob.
How about you, Bill? You won't be here? Any, how about Thursday of that week, or that whole week is that? Thursday?
Yep, Thursday, I'll be here.
Thursday?
I guess it's another day, because then we can notice it on Monday, right?
Yeah. Well, you'll have to check to be sure if that's how it's supposed to be.
Correct.
So, is Thursday look like a go? Well, we'll have to find the room if it's not available.
Yeah, I'd have to check tomorrow. I don't have access to the calendar.
So, Thursday seems like a day that works.
So, put it as a tentative, or is it a...
I would put it as tentative, because we don't know what the status of the plans are at this point. 7:00.
So, shall we table, or what do we do?
Well, I don't think...
It's just an update, so.
It's an update. I'm not sure if we need to, if we need to take action.
No, we just move on.
And then, if we're going to have that Thursday, maybe you can tell the Burger King people if they can have their act together in town.
I will discuss it with them tomorrow morning. I'm not sure if their turnaround...
Is that?
Would, they would be able to get us something by Friday. I mean, it's about a day. Would you still want them to come back and present something?
On Thursday?
Mm-hmm. To give an update?
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, if they can. I'm just trying to, again, accommodate them, because they're anxious to get their permitting.
Okay.
I think they have their act fairly well put together.
I will see what they say.
So, Leo, you said that you had paid for a special meeting, but you never had that special meeting. Why didn't you?
Never ready.
You weren't ready?
I don't even know at what point. It was early on in the project. And I'm not a big proponent of special meetings, you know. I recognize that, you know, the role that the Planning Commission has in bringing people back in for special meetings is, listen, I've been doing this for 30 years. I get it, you know. It's not something I want to call for. So, that, and I probably discouraged it. I'm sure I did, you know. Put her off, probably waited for the two weeks.
Well, I'm sure it was another accommodation that we were trying to make.
We never asked for it. We paid for it. But it would have been likely this project, admittedly.
All right. Any other comments? All right, then. Well, maybe we'll see if Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And then, the Planning and Zoning Monthly Report. Laura, anything? Or people have any comments, questions? If not, do we have a motion to receive and file?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file the Planning and Zoning Monthly Report for February 2019.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Pratt, to receive and file the zoning report for February. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then, we have the preliminary draft review of the DDA plan. Laura, that's your communication.
Yes, and we're still working on the draft document. Our schedule that we originally had with the DDA was to provide the draft plan at their April 9th meeting, so we were trying to push it ahead a bit to get the Commission's feedback this month, before the preliminary draft was reviewed by the DDA. We still definitely want the Planning Commission's input, so we'll move this item to the April meeting then, and we'll incorporate any feedback from the DDA first. After the DDA preliminarily reviews it, then they'll review a final draft and hold a public hearing, probably at their June meeting, so there will still be time to incorporate feedback from the Planning Commission. And then, after that, it will go before the Board of Trustees for actual adoption. So, again, there will be multiple opportunities to review the plan and provide feedback. If there's anything in particular that the Commission would like to share, the last plan was done in 2002, so if there's anything in particular that would be helpful for us to look into at this point, please feel free to share any comments via email or call and discuss as we progress with the plan.
So, the plan is, so is this more like a long-term plan on what they want to see? So, how far out do they look?
30 years. DDA and TIF plans are 30-year forecast, so over the next three decades. A lot of the, a lot of the projects that were originally identified in the 2002 plan were, of course, tied to the streetscape, which had been accomplished. And then, there's been some other projects, like the mast arms, or some improvements to the viaduct with the railroad, that either need some tweaking or are no longer going to be considered by the DDA. So, having a current plan is one of the requirements of the state, and the state now has new reporting requirements as of April 1st this year. That need to be adhered to. So, this plan is an update to the 2002 to ensure compliance with that.
Is the 2002 plan on the website? Do you know?
I don't believe it is, actually, because we were trying to find a digital copy of it, and all we could find were hard copies. It needs to be properly scanned in at a high quality.
Yeah. I think that'd be a great idea for, so that people could look at it, maybe certainly once we, because I'm really, from my perspective, I'm most concerned with year 30, because I'll be 103 at that time.
It's still on the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to see what happens, what they say now, and then in 30 years, did they accomplish it?
Well, maybe Phase Two of 22 foot 74 will be done by then.
All right. Planning Commission comments? Does anyone have comments?
I do. I think that's, the configuration of the room with that table is quite effective.
Yeah.
Giving people room to spread out plans and such.
Okay.
Was that your idea?
No, I believe that maybe the Housing Commission had it set up that way.
I like it.
Yeah. It is much, much easier.
Well, I just, on behalf of, I have two comments. So, on behalf of the Commission, I'm sure they join me in expressing condolences to Laura on the loss of her grandfather about a week or so ago.
Sorry.
Sorry to hear that. And then, also, the Commission, I'm sure, would join in congratulating Bill Pratt on his legacy award from the Chamber.
There you go.
Good luck to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, what is it?
Look on, look on the Plymouth Chamber Facebook page. You'll see that the Chamber, for what I did during the late 90s and early 2000s, have been passing to us older folks at what they call a legacy award for all the work we did at the Chamber. And we, so I got that at a meeting last week. It was, it was very nice.
So, up there, no one?
I do have a comment that I'd like to, not, I'd like to adjourn first before we get off the record.
Okay. So, is there...
I move we adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, and supported by Commissioner...
One more comment.
Okay.
Prior to.
Sure.
I've been getting a lot of inquiries from residents about Airbnbs. Okay, so does that fall under us, or no? Where does an Airbnb fall? Does that fall under a building?
It falls nowhere.
It falls nowhere? Should it fall somewhere? I mean, it's becoming more and more of an issue.
Well, Chuck Hermy was here, I think, the last meeting or so, and did a little handout that was in the paper. I'm sure you...
I don't remember that, but yeah, I think it falls into a gray area. I don't, I don't think we can do much about them.
Okay. That's an answer to a question, I guess, but so, we just let, yeah, I mean, there's no jurisdiction.
There is none.
See, so we have a, we have an unusual incidence where, in our subdivision, a homeowner years ago built an in-law suite onto their home, and their in-laws have since passed. So, that's a perfect Airbnb. And there are neighbors that don't necessarily like having strangers in their, in our subdivision all the time, all the time, different people all the time. So, it's kind of a...
What about your CCRs and short-term rentals?
I don't know. I don't know. So, anyway, just with a question, I don't know how to respond, you know?
Yeah, and I think it might be something like with Uber, how, you know, before, look at taxicabs.
Oh, no, no, I know, no.
You know, so it's...
The world is changing.
Yeah.
Jim, are you in a planted neighborhood, or are you a site condo?
No, no, we're a planted subdivision. And there's nothing in our building in use restrictions that says you can't rent your house. I mean, and it's an older sub, it's 60s subs, so.
A lot of bylaws governing docs for site condos do... A lot of, um, bylaws governing docs for site condos do talk about minimum lease...
Site condos do, yeah, do. All right, okay, so, now...
Any other comments or concerns? Okay, we, we have a... Laura, did you have something?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say that, um, I think Kevin Bennett, the township attorney, has looked into the, uh, concern over short-term rentals, and, um, if there are any ordinances outside of the zoning ordinance that would, um, limit or restrict such a operation, um, perhaps that's a question maybe at the next board meeting, um, to see where he stands.
That was part of the reason, if you follow the story about house parties?
Mm-hmm.
That was a, a big, I guess, that's kind of a thing for young adults to do now, is Airbnb rent a place and have a big, huge party. And that was one of the drivers behind that, is that that's becoming a trend, I guess, all over the place. Rent some big, nice house for a night and just have a bash.
Yeah, wow.
Anyone else? Anything?
We have...
Okay, we have a, a motion that was made by Bill Pratt, and it's supported by Commissioner Barberina, so all in favor to adjourn the meeting at, uh, at eight, eight thirty-four? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.